How y'all doing?
Good.
Good morning, y'all.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Hi, Chambers County Commissioners Court come daughter of this regular meeting of the Commissioners Court. It's Tuesday, September 20, 2020, 9:30 a.m., County Courtroom, Anawak, Texas. It's now 9:34 a.m. Hello, Ryan. Mr. Tyson, you want to lead us some prayer?
The honor to Judge. Bow our heads and pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you with clear eyes and full hearts, Father. And, and Father, we ask you to guide us through this court, guide us through our country, Father, through this COVID and any personal things that anybody may be going through. Father, I ask you to touch anybody that's sick and has family members that are hurting. Guide us throughout this day and let us carry out your will in Jesus Christ's most precious name. Amen.
And Jonathan, pledges?
Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Honor of the Texas law. I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One and indivisible.
Thank you. You're safe. All right, under minute, uh, citizen comments, where's Lauren? Lauren, we have any citizen comments? We'll get back to them just a moment if they do. Okay. The department that's on the hot seat today, one discussing Senator Department update. Eric Karlock with adult probation. As you all know, that we were Chambers Liberty Adult Probation Department. He broken off from Liberty County and now we have our own probation department. And Erica is our director. Eric, I'm turned over to you.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
At this time with the probation department on staff, we currently have a unit supervisor, administrative assistant, we have two probation officers, we have two community supervision officer assistants. And we also have, as well as myself. We have also an administrative assistant, if I didn't mention her. Uh, right now, due to COVID, we, um, our front lobby doors, they're closed. So all of our clients are basically being seen via Zoom, telephone contacts, mail-ins, web reporting. Only our registered sex offenders are required to report to the office. Payments are made online. They can be mailed in. We also have a drop box that is outside of the office. Regarding the community work service program, that's basically kind of been on hold and that's because of COVID. Uh, right now it's just not safe to, uh, put all of the defendants that are required to work on the van. We run the vans on the weekends and take them to various locations in the community where they need to work. So we've kind of put that on hold right now, hoping maybe to revisit it possibly in, uh, January or February. The only thing that, um, the only place basically that we have referred some of the defendants to work would be at the landfill with Eddie. Uh, I've spoken with Eddie a couple of times and he's assured me that he's able to be able to social distance them and still allow them to work on certain projects. Uh, defendants are allowed to make an additional fine payment in lieu of their community work service hours if approved by the courts. Regarding, um, the collection of our community supervision fees at this time, even in the midst of the pandemic, I can say that the office has been consistent with what we have always collected. So, um, even before the pandemic, uh, you know, even for the month of September and October with the separation from Liberty County, this department is consistent. So the officers, the staff, they're working very diligently, uh, to make this department a success.
Do you know what your budget is offhand?
Yes, I have, I have a budget here. Yes, sir. With our basic, uh, supervision budget, we were giving, uh, state funding because that we received state funding and also too, uh, the collection of our probation fees weighed very heavily with our budget. So with our, uh, state funding, we received $121,483.
And how much is county portion of that? Aaron, do you know? Okay, nothing right now, Eric, from county. What's a projected fees? Aaron, do you have that? Okay, he's putting that out. So do you do a monthly report, Erica?
We, we do quarterly reports.
Quarterly reports?
Yes, sir. We do submit, uh, monthly financial reports as well to CJ. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to answer your question about our projections for our fee collections, it would be $420,000.
Okay.
We normally collect about 30 to 32,000 uh, a month, but when we did the budget, of course, we aimed high. We did not know, of course, that COVID would still be here. So we more or less set the budget for the projection of the fees to be at 35.
Hey Erica, can I ask for a little clarification on that? You do say that your weekend, you're running the vans on the weekends? Is that right? Or are you not on the weekends?
Not at this time. Not at this time. And it's just because of COVID.
Yeah. And the workers that are using, you said the landfill. Uh, were you really talking about the box sites or just the landfill?
Landfill.
The landfill.
So they wouldn't be available to help at the box sites if needed, don't say on the weekend? I mean, that's a.
They have to be. I would imagine they have to be supervised.
Yes, sir. They would have to be.
They need to be supervised?
But they're supervised by county. I mean, they're supervised by county employees.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying. I wouldn't think they would be able to work that box out by themselves. They'd have to be supervised.
Well, I didn't, I, I wouldn't talk about by themselves. I talked, I talked about assistance, you know?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know why they couldn't do that, Gary.
Good idea.
Statues are a busy day if they're looking to get the hours. Um, you know, to help people get stuff unloaded and stuff like that, that's, I mean, if you need, if they need to get their community service hours, that may be an opportunity there that that you're, or, or losing.
Erica, would you talk to Eddie about possibly working them at the box site some?
Most definitely. Yes, sir, I will.
Okay, good.
I mean, it's just, just a suggestion. I, they could, they could say they're distancing as well, you know, I mean, older people helping get their stuff out of the back of their truck and stuff like that would be, be awful.
Yes, sir. Most definitely. I will get with Eddie today.
Thank you.
Well, Erica, I just want, I just want to say, uh, welcome to, uh, Chambers County. We're glad to have you. And, uh, look forward to having you around and working with you.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad to be here.
Good. If, if you have any of your notes that you just, you know, read from or kept out of, when, you know, laying out your employees and stuff, I'm not a good note taker. If you send it out, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just, just a little update for your department. If you, if you'll just send it out, that'd be great. Send it to all the commissioners and myself.
Yes, sir.
Also, Erica, I'd like to welcome you and, uh, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Erica? Erica? Erica, anything else?
Yes, sir. No, sir. I'm, I'm good. Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for being on the hot plate this morning. Good luck. Let's know if we can do anything.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, I think Mary Beth's on. Mary Beth, uh, COVID update.
Good morning.
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 Okay, so here we are, still, uh, fighting COVID in the county. Hope y'all are doing well. So as of through Monday, uh, we are at 1,670 confirmed cases in the county. We currently have 89 active cases in the county. And so one of the things that people have asked kind of continually throughout the pandemic is for us to, uh, try to break them down per region in the county. And we just haven't had the ability to do this, just, uh, manpower and timing and data kind of coming in and out and, and how we recover people in the county. So last week we were finally able to do this. And we will only update this, um, weekly. And so this is as of last, um, as of last Thursday, we actually had, uh, 37 active cases in West Chambers County, 20 active cases in mid-county, and 15 active cases in East Chambers County. So if you add those numbers up, those don't add, and don't add up to 89 active cases right now. So we know these numbers don't match up. So we'll, we will actually redo this again on Thursday. Um, we have currently seven in the hospital and, uh, 20 deaths. And we will actually, uh, we will post another, unfortunately post another death today. We have started actually reporting, uh, flu numbers last week. And we report those to DSHS and we do this every year. And we had a lot of requests to post these on the Facebook page. And so we will start doing this. We did it last week. And our flu numbers have already gone up. We only reported, uh, one in the county last week and we're at 11 this week. And so all the healthcare providers, the schools and, uh, uh, the school nurses, those, they report those to us weekly. They report to us positive flu cases, A and B, as well as what's called influenza-like illness. And there's certain criteria they have to meet. So both of those numbers have gone up, flu, A, B, and influenza-like illness in the county. So those get posted every Wednesday. So those will be shared tomorrow. Uh, also, some of the things we're working on right now is getting the, uh, providers in the county registered for the COVID vaccine program. Once that's ready, the FDA approves that and that's dropped shipped, we will get the, uh, providers in the county with vaccine uh, to vaccinate, um, those in line. Again, it's a very top-down approach. Who, who gets that vaccine? It's kind of decided for us, but we need all the help we can get in the county to vaccinate. For the general public, we get this question a lot. Uh, that vaccine probably won't be made available for the general public, um, well on into the summer, next fall, but maybe even until this time next year. Uh, first responders, those critical infrastructure people will be vaccinated first. So we're working really hard to get, uh, our providers registered to do that. It's a very lengthy process. Let's see, flu shots, we did get our shipment of flu shots in, so we're working on, uh, getting people vaccinated. So send them on to the health department or send them on to their primary care provider. Also, lastly, just want to remind everyone that, um, unintended consequences of the pandemic is people not following through with routine health maintenance. And so, or not eating healthier, exercising. So we're just trying to push people to, uh, to get those routine things done and eat healthy and exercise. So. Uh, any more questions?
Hey, Mary Beth. I see, I see they were talking about Pfizer on TV and everything that they're deal with 90% and everything. Do y'all, I mean, when they get that vaccine, do y'all have a choice? I mean, if there's more than one, how does that work?
So initially, um, McKesson will be, all the vaccine companies that are approved, FDA approved, they'll all be sent to McKesson. So initially we won't have a choice. We'll just be sent. And it's, of course, free. There's no, not going to be charged for that. So McKesson will be the distributor of the vaccines and they'll just be sent to us. Most of them who are in the, the last phase of the trials are two dose series. And so you have to, of course, continually get the, the same, uh, vaccine provider that you, you receive the first dose of. But no, so you're absolutely right. I think the Pfizer vaccine, 90%, uh, I think we're really happy with the way it's coming out so far.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, um, well, didn't we, did I drain this or didn't we drop below 50 a couple of weeks ago?
We did. Uh, actually about three weeks ago, we were down, I think maybe even to 30. We had like about active cases. And we've kind of slowly been on the rise and throughout Texas, it's pretty much about the same thing. Our hospitalizations throughout Texas are, I think, at the highest number since August. So, um, yeah. Kind of creeping back up a little bit. So that's why we're urging people maybe to go and get their flu shot as well. So we can kind of keep the flu numbers out of the hospitals as well, not to overwhelm the healthcare system.
And people are getting their flu shots.
They are. They really are. And so we're actually having a drive-through, uh, flu here at the Health and Wellness Center for county employees right now. So we're doing one of those. And then we'll also have one for the general public to be published at a later date. So come on down.
Is it open till two? Is that right?
Yes, sir. 10 to 2.
Is that for anyone on our health insurance?
Uh, all county employees, part-time, full-time, or retirees. Yes, sir.
Hi, any other questions?
No, I mean, are the, are the I C U's and everything still pretty full in this region or?
So no, actually our hospitalization rate is, we're not, um, our, we're doing pretty well on our hospitalization rate. I can look at that and I can send you the actual number, but we're, I think we're at the medium. Yeah, we're, I think we're at level one, level two. Yeah, I think we're, we're doing pretty good in the medical center.
Great.
That's a blessing.
Okay, anything else? Mary Beth, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Y'all for your work.
Thank y'all. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, one point two, discussing Senator proclamation declaring November 15th through 21st, 2020 is international fraud awareness week. Ryan, uh, Ryan, I call Aaron Ryan all the time and and Aaron and, and Aaron Ryan and, Aaron, just wanted to read the proclamation.
Uh, whereas this year marks, uh, the observance of international fraud awareness week, which is set aside to raise awareness about the impact of fraud upon our society. And whereas the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, an organization dedicated to the mission of reducing the incidence of fraud worldwide, estimates that a typical organization loses 5% of its revenue each year to fraud. And whereas state, local, and federal governments are frequent targets of fraud. And whereas instances of fraud in state government undermines the good work and reputation of all state employees who complete their assigned duties with integrity and honesty and decreases confidence in public officials. And whereas fraud against the state of Texas is a burden borne by citizens and businesses in the form of increased cost, loss of public revenues and resources, and increased expenses associated with the investigation, prosecution, and eventual incarceration of end individuals who commit fraud. And whereas tips received from employees are consistently the greatest source of where are detected. And whereas increasing employee awareness of fraud, including the, uh, magnitude of the problem and educating employees about fraud prevention, detection, and reporting techniques is critical for reducing the incidence of fraud against and within Texas state government. Or be it known that the Commissioners Court of Chambers County, Texas, do here proclaim the week of November 15th through the 22nd, 21st, 2020 as International Fraud Awareness Week.
He reads pretty good from under deck. I'll tell you, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tice. Any questions, comments, those in favor? Those, motion carries on 1.3. Uh, we're going to do that at 10 o'clock. Uh, let's go down to, um, maintenance and buildings. Mike is here. Leslie, 7.1, discussing Senator Haringal Bush with PK, PBK, BKB, excuse me. Design Group LLC for architectural design in the south portion of the west annex, not to exceed 50,000. Mike.
Okay. Our, our first discussion was to go into, do the phase two. We did a phase one of the west annex.
They can't hear you, Mike. I'm gonna let you have my chair.
Somebody's got somebody talking in the background too.
Somebody got somebody talking in the background?
Yeah.
So the first original was that we go in and we, we did a phase one on the west annex. And so we were thinking to get additional space and to kind of reconfigure what we have on the phase two part was to hire Al Bush and go in and do a phase two, uh, renovation to the west annex, which I thought, you know, was a good idea. And then Billy brought up the idea of we're not adding any square footage for almost $600,000. Why don't we go build, say, a 2,000 square foot building at square footage? Then for, say, for the tax office, build them a, a, a standalone building. And then we would have the square footage that they, when they move, we would have that square footage. That's a good idea. We could go either way. So I'll let you take it a little farther, Billy.
No, I was just thinking, you know, for that money, for $600,000, you know, allowing $200 a square foot to construct, we could build 3,000 square feet. You know, I think $200 a square foot is a pretty conservative number. We own the real estate. We're not adding any square footage and we're scrapping for additional office space everywhere we can. I just think it's something we need to look very serious at before we commit $600,000 just to reshuffle existing space we already have.
Yeah. I agree, Billy, if, if it's possible.
What are you thinking about, Billy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're at.
Well, you know, I, we, we have extra real estate there in Mont Belvieu. Uh, we got extra real estate here at Cedar Bayou. Uh, you know, we, we've got some real estate, uh, in, uh, off of, uh, Old Needle Point Road that we just purchased.
South of the annex, Old Eagle Drive, area where that.
Did you ask me a question?
I said, I'm thinking on Eagle Drive, south of the annex.
What's the difference, what's the difference in cost of doing that though?
Well, you know, you can construct, Mike, I'll, I'll let you confirm this, but you can, you can build for less than $200 a square foot easily.
On what side, Billy?
Well, if you got $600,000, I mean, you could commit 300, 3,000 square feet if it's at $200 a square foot. But I think we did, I think we need to get some real budget estimates. You know, I'm just winging numbers here. And saying $200 a square foot, I don't think it's going to be more than that, but you know, it's something we need to look at.
Billy, am I, am I incorrect saying that at that $200 a foot, you're a pretty good? I think it would come in under that possibly. I really do.
Well, the costs right now are a little bit high only because of the storms that hit Louisiana. Y'all got to take that into consideration. So we got to be careful about the number. Now, when we build it, things might be a little bit more back to normal, but the storms in Louisiana have number one, taken a lot of labor and a lot of materials in the Louisiana area. I'm sure y'all, I agree with the first statement, but this could be one of those to where because of the storms and because of the, 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 the problems that we've had in this area that it, it could be a, a more on the higher side. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, by the time we do design and, and everything else, I mean, that's $600,000 with all the hoops the county has to jump through. I mean, that doesn't seem to go very far. I mean.
Well, it's not going to go far. You're not adding any square footage. You, you won't have additional labor cost or remodeling too.
I know.
You know, and I'm being very conservative at $200 a square foot. I think we.
I think so too.
I think we at least need to get someone to look at it.
Well, I think, yeah, I think you look at both options.
Yeah, I, I hate to commit $600,000 to note to add zero square footage without looking at the other option.
I agree.
Yeah. No, I, I'm, I'm on board with that. Okay, so we want table.
Judge, hi Judge.
Sir.
Where would these funds come from? I mean, we just had to budget it. Oh, where, where would the money come from? 600,000 plus, you're out there.
Aaron, answer that question, please. We, we discussed that.
Yeah, hey Commissioner, um, so just kind of thinking generally, um, so all 2021, um, I'd budgeted a million dollars. Probably out the general fund for the baseball field in Anawak. So talking to Judge, we might be able to move half of that into the hotel motel fund. Um, haven't, there's no progress coming out there currently. Well, there's one, but it's almost completed. It's historical, uh, at, at, uh, for Anawak. Um, so that's one option that could be available.
So part of the money is budgeted for that baseball field would be moved into, would be taken out of Hotel Motel. And that money's could be spent in all these additional offices, whatever we do there. But I think we pull that for now and let Mike, uh, go back and look at both options and then come back to us.
I agree.
I mean, to, to get a good cost, I mean, we're going to have to have a design on that building and everything, aren't we?
Yeah. And, and I mean, he needs to go back to the architect and, I mean, I and say, okay, so what's the cost? Get a better cost. And here's what we're looking at. And I think you get, we know, we got an estimate on the, um, what we did to the annex. And now we need to estimate on if we built a freestanding building. Good point. Let Mike come back. Okay.
Are we tabling this, Judge?
Sir.
Are we tabling this?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it and Mike can bring it back.
Thank you, Judge.
Raise Darlo in.
He is all in now.
Uh, point three, discussing Senator delinquent tax collection report submitted by Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott. Um, Mike, you in?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mike. How are you?
I'm good. How's everybody today?
Good. We are on your item whenever you're.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, good to see everybody. I want to say so that I don't forget, because, you know, when you get over 60 like I am now, sometimes the memory begins to fade. I, I want to say a special shout out to Commissioner Nelson. He and I have had the opportunity to work together for many years on a variety of projects and he's always been great to work with. And I for one will miss him. And I know he's not leaving quite yet, but for my purposes, this is probably the last court meeting that I will see him at. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge, um, you know, all the good things that he's done for the county and for me in, in trying to collect taxes and deal with taxpayers. So thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it. I appreciate it.
How much they pay you for that?
I'm still waiting for the checks. I'm not quite sure. Anyway, I just take a couple of minutes of your time this morning and give you a little update. Uh, when we met last time at the end of August, of course, we were only a month plus into the COVID experience. Uh, and obviously a lot has taken place since then. In July, we were able to get out our letters on the unpaid 2019 taxes. And about then we started back really with our collection efforts. In August, we had a tax sale. And allow me to tell you that an outdoor tax sale in Anawak in August is hot. And we even had a tent. Uh, we had a really great turnout outside, uh, and sold a variety of properties that day. Um, and so it was a good sale. It was just a little, little unusual because of the heat. We also had a, uh, so, and our next tax sale won't be till February. Uh, we're going to get through the rest of this year and then, uh, February, uh, have our next one. We had our last tax docket with Judge McDonald in October. Uh, took several judgments, uh, and then we're going to have another docket in December. And so that'll help feed into the tax sales that we will, uh, have in, in February. I would say overall that things are moving pretty well. Um, I've provided you with the pie charts and graphs I give you each time. And, uh, allow me, Judge, just to take a minute or two to talk about a couple of items. And then I'll give you a quick update on the court finding fee portion of my report. And of course, if, court, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. On our accounts breakdown chart, we had a little over a million dollars that was due when we prepared this back in the middle of October. I want to point out one account, one, one part of the, of the role, the action bending 36% of the role. We've got a couple of accounts this year that are involved in some appraisal district issues. So the largest account we have, uh, which has an appraisal district issue as to whether or not it's still a good account, owes us $34,000 base tax. So that one will resolve itself either by correcting it off of the roll. So that one will resolve itself either by correcting it off of the roll or getting the property owner to pay. It's basically an industrial account. So I feel good that if it's valid, we're gonna be able to get it paid. Our bankruptcies remain low. You can see that little sliver of 1% of the roll in purple. Uh, we've got a very keen eye on what's going on in the economy relative to COVID. And whether any of the bigger uh accounts that you guys have may end up in bankruptcy. As you know and read every day, there's a variety of oil and gas companies, service companies related to oil and gas that are filing for bankruptcy. And it's something we're just gonna keep our eye out on. If we notice a particularly large one, I'll reach out to the judge, let him know. Um, I don't know that there's anything out there that would be a tremendous driver on your 2020 taxes, but it is something that, that we, again, are keeping an eye out for. And then the other one I'll just mention for you is our in trust, the 4%, the orange portion of our roll. I want to thank the court. Almost, it seems lately that I've had men, items on your agenda to resell property. Uh, that didn't sell at the first sale. And I appreciate the court's consideration of those items. Uh, we've got a lot of interest in the property in the county. I mean, all over the county. And that's a good thing. And right now our trust properties are at a pretty low level of money that's owed to the county. Moving on, Judge, I'll move to the third pie chart, which is our tax year chart. It just gives you a breakdown by tax year of how the money's owed. Uh, as you would expect, the largest single year is 2019. Uh, and again, I mentioned to you, out of that 343, we've got a $34,000 account. Uh, we've also got one interesting thing I'll mention to you, and I should have mentioned it back in litigation. We have a company, it's called Brightland Royalty. It owes us over, has over a dozen accounts of mineral accounts. That's been involved in federal litigation for almost five years now. And it's been a big fight among the company and individuals that are claiming ownership. There's a receiver that's been appointed uh by the federal court that Otilia's been talking to. And we're finally at the point, we've provided them statements and we think we're gonna get this paid. And there's probably at least $50,000 that's owed to the county uh in that litigation. So we're hopeful, knock on wood, before the end of the year that we'll get that paid. Uh, and then finally, I provided you in the tax portion of my report, collection uh results for the 2014 through 2019 year. Uh, and let me just do the last two for you, 2018, uh, which is our last complete year. We finished June 30 of 2020. Uh, we had collected almost 75% of the $509,000 that had not been collected. Uh, and then through September, we're up to almost 80% of that. So a good solid collection. You'll note between 2018 and then the 2019 rollover that occurred. July 1 of 2020, the amount that was left for us to collect increased about $110,000. Not anything alarming when you take into account the new taxes that the county's been growing with. So proportionately, you're still collecting a very strong current year collection. You're in the upper 90 percentile before we take over. And you'll see for the 2019 year, in the first three months of our collection cycle, we've gotten almost 46% of that 619 collected. I'd be happy, Judge, to answer any questions on the tax portion uh of our report. If not, I'll give you a quick update on the court fine and fee. Uh, as you know, with COVID, we sort of went in a, a holding pattern for many months. And the courts really weren't taking any proactive action relative to uh collections. Uh, that's been turned back on now. Uh, we're back doing the notices for the court. Uh, we're also getting out demand letters again and starting up some, some uh calling to try to get people to get in and take care of their business. If you'll see on the first page, I've given you a summary by JP Court of how much money each court's turned over to us. How much has been resolved in cash? How much has been resolved in other than cash, as in time served or dismissed, uh, some non, non, non cash resolution? And then the aggregate collection for each court. And then the aggregate resolution countywide, uh, we're at 29% between cash and non cash uh resolution. Uh, not a bad number. Uh, all things considered, that for the last six months, we've had very little overall activity. Uh, and then we've given you how many addresses we've collected, letters we've mailed. Uh, just to make a little joke at the post office expense, you know, we're still one of their largest supporters. Because we mail out a ton of letters to people. Uh, unfortunately, many of them come back, as you can see by how many addresses that we've collect, corrected over time. And then you can see all the phone contacts that we've had with each court historically. Uh, and then finally, I've given you the maps this month, or this report, I picked JP one back at the top. And you can see by bad address, by good address, where a, a lot of the money is, by the zip code. And then the last map shows you uh sort of pins all over the United States. Uh, of people that have come through precinct one, gotten a ticket, not resolved it. Uh, that we're trying to reach out. And you can sort of see the inherent uh challenge in collecting court fines and fees. That you're not dealing with local people generally that just live down the street that you can knock on the door and get them to pay. I'll be curious to see as we move forward in the legislative session, if anything is done in the court collection arena. Uh, you know, everything that you hear and read about makes you think that, you know, there may be some. Quote, you know, relief of some sort. Uh, we're just gonna have to see because you have the needs of the counties and the cities to collect revenue. And then what the state may think is the right thing to do. Good luck on that. I guess we'll all find out come January how that plays out. With that, Judge, Commissioners, I'd be happy to answer any questions on anything that we're doing on your behalf.
So there were no uh delinquents, nothing to link on JP three?
Uh, no, this, this month I just gave you the, the maps for JP one on JP.
No, no, back to your.
No, JP three doesn't participate. They basically have nothing.
Okay.
That's true. Sorry, Judge.
I just saw they weren't on there, so I wanted to make sure.
Yes, sorry.
They go, let goes do two anyway, Judge.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
They, they don't have much.
All right, questions to Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate the good job y'all do, keeping our collection up and everything.
Michael, we'll ask you a question. For the uh tax sales, has there ever been any consideration to do them virtual?
The, the, I'm sorry, the tax which?
Tax sales.
Um, you know, there's been a couple of companies that have started to rattle the cage about doing tax sales virtually. Uh, and my firm has a product that we're working on as well. Um, sort of my thought on that, Commissioner, is I find, and maybe I'm just old school. That the majority of the people that come to buy are the adjoining landowners. And, you know, we make a concerted effort to send them notice of all the, of the tax sales. So when we do a tax sale. We identify the adjoining landowners, we send them a copy of the sale and say, hey, there's property near you that may up be, that may be up for sale. You may want to do it. We have 25,000 plus peoples that subscribe to our email list that get notice of our sales. In terms of virtual sales, there's two ways to do it. You have one company out there. Uh, that's doing it where you can only do virtual sales. Online only. You have another company that's about to sign their first contract down in the valley that can do it as a hybrid. Where you can have people in attendance as well as somebody from that company at the sale. So that you can have that participation. Me personally, if we decide if the court's interested in looking at that. I would look, I would lean toward a hybrid method. Again, I may be old school, but I hate the idea of trying to get people to only be able to purchase through that. And as you can expect, of course, there's additional cost when you go virtual. Uh, because uh that company's got to make a profit. And so they're gonna add on to your tax sale roughly a $300 charge. Uh, on top of whatever is owed now. So there's some pros and cons of it, but again, it is something that we're looking at. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I, I just know with my experience, most of the uh auction sales have the hybrid. You know, they're pretty popular and which uh allows the people to come. But there's a certain group of people that are constantly just sitting on, on the uh internet. You know, investors that look for opportunities that just add another dimension that you're not going to get in person.
It, it, that, that, no, that, that's true. But then that also brings in people that don't know what they're bidding on. They tend to, they think, oh, it's 20 acres in Anawak. This is great, but they don't really know what they're doing. But I, I, I hear it. I think it's. Well, yeah, we get their money and then it's easy to file a new tax suit when they go to Lincoln, because I know who they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have a question. What is that picture to you riding on the wall back there?
This, this one?
No.
That one there?
Yes, that one.
It says Houston. It was, I bought it at a uh art show at Memorial Park a couple of years ago.
I was wondering what that little purple thing was on.
And then the one next to it, this is the picture of sharks approaching the bench with the judge.
That's a good one.
That's a good one, yeah.
That looks like Commissioner's Court. All right, Mike, I have a, a serious question. Do you, um. On the delinquent tax, need to go, are you prepared to go to executive session, discuss? Uh, the item that we discussed yesterday? Or you need some time or?
I, I can.
We could take this item to executive session if you'd like to.
If, if you would like a preview of what's going on, I'm happy to do it, Judge.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll put you back on, if you've got time, um, maybe the next 20, 30 minutes or so.
Okay.
Or, I mean, we could go now if you need to.
Um, I've, I've got a 10:30 call to discuss the topic you want to talk about.
All right, let's do it right now then. Okay, 10:15 AM, we are going to recess to executive session. Uh, to take 1.3 back there for consultation with attorney. And we'll be at it this time. Take a quick break. Um, I'm gonna take a quick bathroom break. All right, Commissioner Court, come to order after executive session. It's 10:45 AM. Let's go to 1.3, entertaining motion to accept the blank tax report from Purdue Brandon.
Oh, move, Your Honor.
Tag it.
Motion back to Mr. Ty, second back to Mr. Gore. Favor. All right. Most securities, under parts recreation, 6.1, it's got to consider accepting the donation. Surveying parcel 4227 from Cedric Green for outdoor basketball court in Handcomber, Texas. If you, uh, you got pictures of this, uh, just a little bit of history years and years ago. Um, I think it was back when Sid Desmo was Commissioner. That's been a long time ago. The county erected two basketball goals, put some pavement down. And um made a little basketball area there in. Handcomber off Spotslo, Spatrow.
Yes, sir.
And you'll see by the pictures what it is, what it looks like. Well, after, I had a request. Of county to, we maintained it for years, then we hadn't maintained it in a long time. For us to put up some new goals and things and. After some investigating and talking, it appears we don't own the property. So. And as of this morning, Scott, Mr. Field looked at it and uh I'll let Mike tell you what Scott had to say about it, see if he visited with him. Mike?
Okay, after, after talking with Scott and, and actually looking at this site a little more. I, I have not been involved in it, but after talking with, with Scott and then I just got off the, um, with Kirk. The parts director, uh, this basketball court is basically connected to the road. And for us to go in and actually build a basketball court that would have kids playing basketball. Where the ball could run, roll out into the street and some, somebody actually maybe hitting a kid. To me is just not a good idea. So I would have to agree with, with, uh. With Scott that maybe we, we relook at this and maybe see if there's something else we can do. Other than build a, build an actual basketball court right next to a road and put somebody in danger.
So, and it's a corner, it's a corner lot, if you look at page 27.
Now, Scott says that the, the, the people in the church across the street. Would like to do something and have been wanting to do something along the lines of a park for kids. I'm just now getting involved in this. If you would, maybe, maybe we could pull this and, and let Kirk and I go out there and maybe talk to Scott. Maybe we can do something. I just.
I, I got a quick question. The, there, there shows to be a house on this land.
The house is to the north of it.
Is that, is that in the donation deed too?
No, I said the part where the court is.
It's to the east of it, right, Jimmy?
Yes, sir.
Is the house part of the parcels, what I'm asking?
No, look at page 27, Gary.
But it shows to be on the tax row as part of the property.
Yeah, it is. But what we're cutting out won't be. I mean, that property there is west of the canal. And everything is east of the canal.
How many basketball courts do we have countywide?
I can call Kirk and find out. I don't know. Yeah, I mean, and we're talking about a basketball court. We were talking about putting some pavement down and, and putting new goals up, so it's.
Yeah, but didn't we just put a canopy or two up over some other basketball courts?
We put one up in uh Anawak, north of the canal. Or we're working on it, I don't know.
Working on it, Judge.
Working on it. I mean, do we really need a basketball court? There's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think. Don't have anything to do.
I think we need something for the community.
I mean, I know we need place, things for communities everywhere, you know. I got zero over here.
Okay, so. Whatever y'all want to do, uh, Kirk's got the money to do it. But if, if you think it's a danger, the safety issue, we probably didn't table it.
Well, let's, uh, let's table it, Judge. And I can get with Kirk and Mike and Scott and him, talk with that church and um. See if we can work out something right across the road there.
All right, so let's, why don't we pull 61 and 62? Because it may, you may want to put it back on differently.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, Lauren, you gonna get? Um, what's your name on the phone? All right, so we're gonna pull 61, 62. All right, going to environmental protection, 91, discussing Senator Nish's basement located 109 Third Street. Victoria, you there?
Yes, there I am.
Okay, we'll start with 9.1, if you'll tell us what's going on there.
9.1 is which of the?
That's the stall street. I mean, Third Street and Stall, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 109 Third Street.
109 Third Street.
So. We received a complaint. Okay, let me put my. So we had received a complaint back in March of this year for high grass. Uh, on the property and, and identified in the pictures that we submitted as well. They did have a high grass. Um, at one time it looked like they mowed it, but then the rubbish and. General. Items uh were left in the backyard. They have not been removed. There is some propane tanks um that can be identified in some of the pictures. As you have the driveway, uh, there's just a lot of. Abandoned items, you know, just miscellaneous items that are left on the property. The property has now been overgrown with weeds in the backyard. You can see the high grass from the front yard as well. Uh, we tried multiple times via letters to in touch with owners, but we did not hear back from the owners. Had any, gets any time. Uh, nobody got a hold of us either via mail, uh, phone call, nothing. And just this morning, we actually seen where that they do owe a couple of years on their tax record. And just this morning, we actually seen where that they do owe a couple of years on their tax records.
So, if they owe two years on their tax records, we should be able to file on that for delinquent taxes and let Darla settle it, instead of going through the motions.
So I'm not aware if there's a possible, uh, if it's already, you know, in process with the tax office to be sold or not. Uh, like I said, we only obtained the records this morning, and that was on the website, so I couldn't actually speak to anyone in person in the tax office.
If you would. What, what's the owner's name? Lawrence looking up.
What's the name on the, from the property?
Uh-huh.
It's, uh, Hargrave is the last name. Harold Wayne.
Victoria, if you'll obey.
Block fifty-two, lots eight through fourteen. And as of twenty twenty, the value of the property was a hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty.
Okay, Lawrence looking up, Commissioner Combs has a question.
If you, to abate it, we would be, we would, uh, pick up all the trash and rubbish around and mow the grass, clean and cut weeds?
Yes, sir. It would require setting the grass and removing all that rubbish that's in the backyard. Um, and right there at the driveway.
So these pictures were taken in May, I assume it's a lot worse now?
He said the pictures were taken in May, he assumes it's a lot worse now?
I believe the pictures, uh, we provided were, it also included the ones taken just last week. Let me double check and make sure.
They're stamped, uh, in May and in June of twenty twenty.
It says down here, let me look. Harold Wayne Hargraves, doesn't say seniors, Ed Ox. Okay, senior that he's deceased and there's a probate.
It may be in the state, Jimmy, it's got.
That's what Lawrence saying, that it's looking at.
Uh, you know, I, I hate to do anything until we've actually contacted at least somebody that, uh, where they, I mean, they let it go like it is, but the fact we hadn't ever contacted anybody means they still don't, you know, I mean, they don't know that they're under, um.
Well, if they haven't paid taxes in two years, it's, it's getting real close to.
What block is it?
To Darla file on it.
Well, a hundred and seven thousand, you know.
Victoria, does it show what block it is? Property? It's block fifty-two.
Okay, it's part of the state. She's right. All right, so, a- and there has been a probate filed on it? Let us do a little investigating on it, uh, see who filed the probate, see if we can get you a contact, uh, that, Victoria. And we'll, we'll get you that after court. Who filed the probate is who we need to talk to, uh, about it. So let's try to, let's go on to, uh, that one, go to nine point two, discussing considering nuisance abatement located in four twenty-one West Cypress Avenue, Winnie, Texas. Go ahead, Victoria.
Okay, so for this one, the county member had contacted us back in the twentieth of July, and it is that he was in quarantine, uh, for COVID. Now, the complaint did start in March as well. And like I said, in, in July, whenever he contacted us, he stated that he was in quarantine due to COVID. And that he was gonna be out for about fourteen days, and that quarantine should be lifted by the thirtieth of July. And he would be giving us a call as soon as he was able to get out to the property and get an estimated timeframe for the cleanup. That was the last time he, uh, contacted our department, on eighteenth of August. Uh, we visited, or the seventeenth of August, he visited the site, and no change had been made to the property. And then last week, uh, Darla, as a matter of fact, uh, had just gone out to see if there was any changes last minute, and there was none. Now, the front yard, the grass.
Victoria? Victoria, there was.
Not as high as the backyard. The backyard just has hot, overgrown weeds, bushes, grass, it just looks like a jungle back there.
Victoria.
And they have.
She can't hear me, the judge.
They were cleaning out the house. They had like some laundry hamper, uh, trash, uh, just rubbish there in the front, uh, where the garage is and about the front door.
All right, Commissioner Nelson has a question, Victoria.
Yeah, uh, I did say that Darla did say there had been some changes. And weeds were taller.
I was saying that she verified that there is, there has been no changes done.
That's what, she said that the grass and the weeds had gotten taller. He said there had been changes.
The front yard, the grass in the front yard is not as high as the grass in the backyard. So possibly somebody tried to make the front yard look a little bit better, but it's still over the twelve inches that it should be per our needs.
So what about taxes on this property?
So it looks like the taxes from twenty nineteen have not been paid, but that's the only thing. They don't look like they, they owe any more taxes than that.
And, and they, and they did sign the letter, so, I mean, they have been notified, and, uh, the fact.
Yes, so it's safe on the president's district as well. The owner is Robert Montgomery. Um, but the property is in care of Stephen Montgomery. Mr. Stephen Montgomery was the person who contacted our office back in July. And like I said, as of July twentieth, he has not made any further contact with our office. And in August, when we visited the site, no change has been made. And then in last week, no change has been made either.
So he was notified that he was going to court today?
We did notify them that this was going to be, be going to court. We even provided them with the link to be able to send in any, uh, comments or any information that they felt was needed for this case, but, I mean, I, I personally don't know if they did. I don't know, maybe they reached out to Lauren in some way. But like I said, to our office, nobody has contacted us since July twentieth.
All right, Lauren said no, she hadn't, hadn't reached out to us either. So you requesting that we, um, abate the, actually the, the rubbish and the mowing? And then put a lien on the property?
Yes, sir, that is what we are asking for.
Oh, move, Judge.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Nelson. Any other questions or comments? None of those in favor? Opposed, most carries, uh, you're gonna have the Parks Department, um, I mean, is that something Parks Department could do, I assume?
They can do that, yes.
Okay.
Now, we're just tabling the other?
Yes, sir, I tabled nine point one.
Okay.
Till we get her a contact, who filed the probate on that estate. So Lauren said she's sending that to you right now, Victoria. So we'll table that one and put it back on court. All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's go down to consent. We need to pull number thirty, Perkory. Thirty-six, Person Scott Peel. Uh, Lauren said she sent the, on number eighteen, wasn't anything in the packet. Uh, the appointment to TPC and the TAC, uh, for Houston Galveston Air Council. Uh, TPC, the primary member will be Commissioner Combs, alternate Corey Taylor on the TAC, Transportation Advisory, the primary Corey Taylor, and the alternate Commissioner Combs. So, uh, precinct one, questions?
And, 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 and the claim pocket on page one oh five, we'd looked. There's two.
What number you took, what number, number is it?
Well, I'll, I'll get, I'll get with Kate on that.
Okay.
I'll just get with Kate. Um, part, purchasing. I see they put down for a new forty, it's, uh.
What number? What number?
Number six, number sixteen.
Okay, approved the purchase of twenty twenty-four to escape, still before an amount of twenty-two thousand, fifty dollars. Go ahead.
And I spoke with George yesterday, and I just want him to elaborate that, um, um, I asked him, could the, all the deliveries be dropped at the site? And he was saying.
Same thing. Huh? I asked him same thing, go ahead.
Okay, did he want to elaborate to the court as he spoke to the rest of the court about this?
We'll get him on in a minute. Um, I, I'll get him, and we'll go back to it. What else you got?
Okay, uh, I've already spoken with that one. Number twenty-nine. The hog trap.
Parks is hog trap, cestures from Texas Wild Hog, drop amount of five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Questions? You want Billy to explain it, Commissioner Combs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, yeah, we have a hog problem in, uh, in the Beach City area. Actually, we have a hog problem countywide. In trying to ca, uh, trap them, and when I started talking with, uh, Gilbert Phillips and the sheriff and other ones, the current single person or single hog, hog trap that we're using requires them to check them daily. They're not, they, they're very time consuming, and they suggested these, uh, round type, it's like a pen. And the camera is set up in there, and you got remote gates that are actually operated from a telephone.
Bless you.
These things are designed to capture multiple hogs at one time. You let them get comfortable coming in, eating. They bring their buddies and their family and their cousins, and you start getting several in there, you just remotely hit the button and, uh, trap them. You do not have to check it every day. So I wanted to get one and try it, see if it works well, you know, uh, good, maybe we'll get another one. If the hog problem, uh, we can set it up in Beach City. If we need it somewhere else, it can be moved. Actually, uh, TGS flew, um, their property with a helicopter for five hours Sunday, and they didn't see a single hog. Uh, however, you know, we have quite a few calls, and, you know, Gilbert and the sheriff can speak to it. And I've received several calls for hogs all the way down Beach City. I don't know if it was the tree cover or what, why they didn't get them. We wanted to see, you know, how many we could get out of the helicopter, but not, not a single hog. So I'd like to get the trap, get it set, and let's see how it works.
So, you, that, I mean, that brings up a thought I had, if, if, if they've got to check those traps every day. Uh, those gang cams, I don't think are that expensive. They could put some of those on those other traps to save having to go there every day.
Not, not a bad idea.
What those, those game cams cost, that, that connect to your phone.
Yeah, and you pay a monthly fee with them.
And, and you can, you can do the same process about getting a comfortable in there
by setting the gate and leaving it set where they don't, where they can't trigger it. Just put your feet in there, and after they get used to going in there, you can use a gang camera to, to, uh, monitor the number of hogs that are going in there. And then you set it, would give you the opportunity to catch a bunch of them at one time. But it's not near as expensive as this fifty-two hundred dollar trap. You could buy, I mean, you could have ten traps for that, for that kind of money. I mean, they've got twelve. Um, this is just one trap.
Gary, I'm not the expert at this. This is what was recommended by the ones that do it, you know.
I've caught a lot of hogs too, though. I mean, and I've dealt with them on a farm, but, uh, you can't trap them out. I mean, that's just one thing about it, there's, you can, you can, it's, you have a potential that you can maintain the herd, but you can't, you can't completely trap them out. They're, uh, they get.
No, no, you can't. All you can do is set up and track. You know, you slow them down. I, I agree, you're not gonna trap them out.
But your, your odds are a lot better with ten trap, one trap.
That's not what, that's not what I'm told, you know, uh. Like I said, this is, this was recommended to me. I know nothing about it.
Well, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, you got a lot, lot better chance of catching hogs in ten traps than you have just one trap.
Are you gonna table it? Gary, you and Billy worked with sheriff's office to figure out best route to go?
Well, I, I, I've never give fifty-two hundred dollars for a hog trap, Judge. I'm, that's a lot of money to me.
Well, I mean, it traps like twenty at a time. You're, you're not trapping a single hog.
Yep, you gotta get them to go in there.
Right. I'll see, okay, we table it.
I, I mean, I know what, I know what, I know the principle behind it, and, 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 you know, those, those things are remote, you know, I mean, those, they work good, if, if you got power, cell power, I guess, in a remote area, but, you know, we, we've always been numbers. I mean, we've, we've caught a lot of hogs. And if I only had one trap, that wouldn't done any good on them. I mean, that, because there's, you know, I mean, there's just so many of them. I just, I just say, if you're gonna get in the hog business, you're gonna have to get in a number of traps. You gotta get, it's not, it's not gonna be some, I mean, it's a problem statewide, you know, it's not just Chambers County.
Understand, and this is what a lot of places are going to, around Austin, Austin stuff where they've controlled them.
Let's table it. Billy, if you and Gary work together with the sheriff's office, figure out, come back, figure out how we want to attack this, attack it, no pun intended. All right, yes, Commissioner Gore, oh, you wanted, let's go back to, uh, what number was that one?
Sixteen.
All right, go to nineteen sixteen, uh, we have parking in here now, George. Yeah, you come up here and I'll stand up for a minute.
Morning, guys.
Hey, George.
Heard you mention something about, uh, the lids. You want to talk about that, or are you good with that one? You told it.
Morning, George.
Morning.
I mean, that just seemed like a lot of money for two lids.
Remember, it's not, it's not, it's not the toilet seat, Judge, it's the lid. They have been broken in the parks, and we had to replace them. The company, that's the name you see. And I just wanted to make sure that you were, you were happy with what you got.
I am. I, I, I'm good. I appreciate the assist on that yesterday. Now, I just want you just elaborate on the, on the.
And, and, okay, yes, sir, on, on the vehicle, we, we just need something, whether it be something surplus or something that we need to buy, et cetera. As we move to the west side, the department moves to the west side, uh, central receiving is still gonna happen. Commissioner, we can't go sending stuff to every, every different office, because that's where things are gonna get messed up. It's still gotta come to us as central receiving, and then from there, we dictate where it needs to go. And part of the, uh, the purchasing code that I'm, uh, that I'm appointed to follow it, it says that I shall see that all, uh, material supplies and equipment in a court are delivered to the, uh, where it needs to go in accordance with the purchasing contract. So it's, it is part of the statutory, uh, 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 code that I'm, uh, having to follow too. And the other thing too, a lot of the stuff, Commissioner, to save money, we'll combine orders from different offices. And by doing that, we're able to save money. So we'll get an order, and it might have three or four or five different offices in that one order. From there, we're able to discriminate and get it all to the right place. Uh, vehicle itself, just letting you know that, uh, that's most of that money, or some of that money will be, would be coming from our twenty twenty budget that we have. We're able to save some money, and we're able to use that if, if needed. Uh, again, if, if this is an issue, not a problem. We just need to make sure we have something to be able to go back and forth.
No, I, I, you know, I don't think it was much of an issue after you and I spoke yesterday. I just wanted you to elaborate to the rest of the court. And, I mean, because I've had other departments ask me, hey, why can't we just drill, deliver straight to us? And I wanted them to understand why.
Right, and it's, like I say, it's law. It's not just, uh, wanting to keep it all in my office. It's something that I am required to make sure that happens.
Your personnel, I mean, since you're moving to the west side.
Yes, sir.
I have to, how's that gonna work? Because, I mean, y'all get stuff every day coming east side.
We, yes, sir, that's a good point. So one of the things we don't want to do is we don't want to move our post office, we don't want to move stuff like that. Because again, at the end of the day, this is a temporary move. It might be temporary two years, three years. It might be temporary two years, three years, four years, but it is a temporary move. So we don't want to upset the the basket that much. So we're going to try and keep our post office box here, our 1380, and make daily trips. We still need to bring paperwork to auditing or to the treasurer, et cetera. So we'll still need to be making trips on a daily basis to this courthouse. Uh, the other thing is if we uh, if we're able to uh, 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 coordinate with all the departments, we might just order maybe once or twice a week and make deliveries once or twice a week, not a daily delivery. And there's always maintenance. We can always use maintenance to come pick up stuff and deliver it to other people. But at the end of the day, we're trying to reduce what other departments have to do to do for us. So we're going to try and do it ourselves as best we can. And I said, Mike sitting right here saying he won't do it. No, he he would help. And I'm just saying, Commissioner, we're just trying to make transition as easy as possible. I know financial needs to be moved out of the courthouse, and we're trying to do what we can to help.
What about using your winning employee traveling back?
And 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 that that good point, Judge, we are going to use a Tanya who does live on the east side. When there's stuff that goes all the way to the east side, to let her leave a little bit, few minutes early to make a drop off and then finish her day or come in early. But we, no, but we still need to make, you know, I think it was-
Hey, George, y'all, do y'all get, do y'all get stuff on pallets and stuff?
On occasion, yeah, Commissioner, but when it does happen, I mean, it we have to go through and figure out how to get it off the truck, et cetera. So we not to do that.
You can get it off the truck, but where are you going? Where are you going to put it to get it out of the weather is what I'm getting at.
Well, that's why I say we don't do that very often.
Very good. Unless right now, unless you unload it out there at Roden Bridge, we don't have a-
Yeah, you get delivered to the warehouse.
We have that same problem here, Gary, here at the courthouse. I mean, the problem is the same here as it would be out there. Good point, though. And we try not to let that happen.
It's not a lot, is it?
No, no, that's why I say we do. We the the buyers are real good about making sure how we get things in. And what do need to delivered and unloaded, we usually send it to the warehouse, Gary.
So you send it to the warehouse over there at Roden Bridge?
Yes, sir.
Our warehouse.
The warehouse that we have, the where Bill's at, where where Bill's at, Bill's warehouse.
Okay, you're talking about the uh, the warehouse?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Where we have a forklift and we're able to unload it.
Right.
Have somewhere to hold it until it's going to go wherever it needs to go. Down the road, they're going to have to do some kind of warehouse.
Very often?
Sir, no, no, no.
Okay. So most time when you have a delivery, it's just it's going to be a small group of packages and stuff.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's just, you know, those trucks, if if you have a lot of trucks, it's you know, like, it's kind of tight back there in the back. We got a lot of, we got a lot of cars back there now.
You have to build some parking.
What's that?
We'll have to build some parking.
We will have to, yeah.
I think I think most of the delivery is um, PS and FedEx. I don't see many big trucks around, any 18-wheelers.
We do get some 18-wheelers, you know, I mean, they they get some stuff at the tax office.
Yes, sir.
Place and stuff. All right. Any other questions? So so uh, so when are you, when are you planning on this move?
Uh, as soon as the building gets put in uh, by the annex for the treasure and the auditor, and we're able to move the treasure and the auditor over there, then that's when we would move to the west side, Gary.
So so you don't have any projections on a timeline, though?
I I would feel, yeah, I would feel comfortable to say six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Two, three months.
The building, the building's on the way here, but yeah, we still got to get ready for it.
You're going to be more convenient for me. I know that. Appreciate it.
Do what now, sir?
That you're going to be more convenient for me.
Oh, good. Hey, I want one of y'all happy. Heck, you know, one out of one out of four ain't bad.
No, 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 wait a minute. You got a judge going to be happy too, because I'm going to get him out of the courthouse.
Yeah.
Five. I'm doing good. All right, guys, that all y'all need from me?
Yep, thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, guys.
All right, what else, Commissioner Gore?
Yes, that's it, Judge.
George, you got my glasses. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I was looking for my glasses. George stole them. Nothing else, Jimmy?
Not that I can think of right this second, no, sir.
All right, precinct three, Gary.
So I mean, I got-
You skipped two, Judge.
Oh, well, okay, I skipped two precinct. No, I started with four.
Oh, okay, we're going to reverse.
Commissioner Tice, I'm sorry. You're good, you're good.
Is it me, Your Honor?
Yes, it is.
Okay, hey, I want to, you know, Brian, I talked to Brian. This is about the hog control. And we all know it's a problem around the entire state. Truly, it's a problem in 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 our nation. I have a contact, a friend I've known for about 50 years, and that same trap that Billy's describing, I've seen some amazing photos. I'm going to make a call to him and and if you don't mind, Your Honor, and what he does is he comes and sets up that same exact trap, and he doesn't charge us one penny. All he wants is the hogs, and he wants them alive. Uh, and, you know, it's it's worth the telephone call. And that way, if it does work well, we don't, we're not out any money, and the guy sets up the trap. So that's an option too, Commissioner Combs. How many hogs were till Ryan Silvia set up a few cameras out at a handcomber? And it's amazing, a law since piece of property, Your Honor. So that's my two cents worth there, Billy, and Judge.
Deal. I'll get rid of them hogs anyway again.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We'll 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 give them to Nelson if he wants them.
Don't give them to me.
All right, so what else?
Uh, that's it, Judge. The only other one we we've touched on, so I'm good. We can move on from two.
All right, precinct three now.
I'm okay, Judge. I'm good.
All right, precinct four, Billy.
Uh, item number 14, the land that Dave Wilcox donating to the county. What is that? Where is it?
That starts with the courthouse. Uh, it's part of the Justice Center property.
Tell him thank you very much.
Yeah, I bet they don't.
All right, and uh, on item number 28, we had a pretty substantial increase in our mosquito insurance, control insurance. I I assume that, you know, it's not just a renewal. We went out and looked at it, and that's about the best we can do.
It is. I spoke with George about that yesterday, Billy, and I mean-
What number is that, Billy?
Uh, 28.
I I spoke with George about that yesterday, and that is an increase. Uh, also, we have a brand new plane. The value is up on that. But yes, it did. They went out for biz, and that was the best deal we could find.
Wow.
All right, thank you. And item number 35, uh, on the hangar lease agreement, a question to my fellow court members. Would would the court like to have separate rates for residents and non-residents in our hangars? You know, we have that for building rentals and for the other things we have around the county. I I just question really to the court, you know, personally, I feel like our citizens should deserve a little bit better rates and because they their taxes subsidize it.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with you, you know.
I agree.
We lean toward doing that, like you said, on things also. All right, what else?
That's all I got. So-
All right, I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda uh, with table 29, 30 and 36.
No move, Judge.
Second.
Question by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Nelson. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. It's 11:22 AM. We're going to go to executive session, uh, 20.1, discussing real property for official county use and improvement. 20.2, discussing consider county airport policy regards to hangar and land lease as relates to in-county and out-county residents. 20.3, receive offer on the sale of real property and respond if necessary regarding disposition or continuing negotiation. 20.4, discuss consider applications and order appointment of the very first judge of the Chambers County Court at Law to take office January 1, 2021, 7:23 AM. We will recess to executive session. It'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back into executive session.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know what we did, but probably our head was turned right or something.
You remember how slow? Need you nice. Yeah, we need to post a special call meeting for that 100 property.
You should let me know on that before.
Oh, he said he's going to agree about the 20th.
Oh, okay.
So let's see what's 20th. Are we live? We on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Austin didn't tell me.
Sorry.
I was talking to myself. No, actually, I was talking to Eric. Okay, court come to order after executive session is 11:55. 20.1, no action. 20.2 is tabled. 20.3 is tabled. Uh, 20.4, discuss consider applications to order the appointment of the first judge of the Chambers County Court at Law, take office January 1, 2021. And I will say this is a historic month for Chambers County. Um, you know, the second county court at law, due to our growth and the number of cases that's being handled in any court. It's going to take load off county courts, some of the load off of district courts. Uh, what what I'm thinking, one out of three cases will will stay in county court. Other two out of three will go to county court at law. You know, we already have a court reporter, which we did for this year, so I'll entertain a motion.
No move that we accept.
Oh, for the record, we only have one person that was interested. Submitted a letter of interest for that position, and that would be Scott Peel, county attorney. Uh, motion by Commissioner Tice to appoint uh-
Second.
Second by Commissioner, was that you, Gary?
Yeah.
All right, second by Commissioner Nelson to Scott or Peel, who's currently the county attorney in Chambers County, uh, to the to be the first judge of the Chambers County Court at Law, effective January 1, 2021. And how many strikes did he have? Well, again?
Three.
Was it at least three? All right, those in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Peel. All right, speech.
Uh, I was told to keep it, yes, I was told to keep it short, so I want to thank you for considering me as uh, uh, the the only person. Uh, makes me wonder what else everybody already knows that I apparently don't, since they didn't put their name in the hat. Uh, but I'm grateful that you took the opportunity. I have a cheering squad in the other room. Um, I am grateful for the opportunity and that y'all didn't decide to go out for somebody who was more qualified and extend the application period. So um, thank you very much, and I look forward to uh, serving everybody in the county in this new role come January after being sworn in. Thank you.
Okay, and I will say, Scott, you know, I know firsthand your work ethics and and your ethics period. And that weighed a lot on my decision to to appoint you to this judge too.
Thank you.
All you've done for the Commissioners Court for all these years, but you're not done yet. You still got a half and a half.
Yes.
You should have more spare time on your hands now, Scott.
Now, Scott, we can't, we're, you know, you're still going to have to do some counseling for us at times, Scott.
Yeah, you want to have the time, you can have another couple of kids now.
I think my wife is watching.
All right, seriously, congratulations. I look forward to working with you and as fellow judge versus the county attorney. And I will publish the county attorney's opening in the paper on the website. We'll start taking letters of interest, letters of, um, I guess, letters of interest are submission to be considered ASAP. So we'll put it on the court agenda for 24th to appoint a county attorney effective January 1.
Okay.
Anything else, Scott?
I think that covers it, sir.
Anything else from the Commissioners? If not, nothing further to come before the court with new judges, with hogs, with everything else. Court is adjourned.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Good rap, Scott.
I got, I got.